Okay, let me simply say thank you for coming out tonight and joining us. I would truly like to say these are some exciting times in the city of East Chicago. We've been truly blessed, financially we've been blessed, to go from a negative to positive, financially. I'd like to share with people and say when I first started as your mayor, we were fifteen million dollars in debt. Now I'm happy to report that we have a ten million dollar budget deficit.
Surplus.
I get, a surplus, surplus, I'm sorry. Surplus, thank you. That's why you need a good team behind you. Also, to the left and to the right of me is my staff, and you can see not only do they look good in red, everything they do, they do it to the highest quality and level, and I've been truly humbled by having them. I hope that you've had the opportunity to look around and see some of the illustrations and billboards that we have up. You can see that these are exciting times. We're looking at this year probably making upwards of fifty million dollars in investment across the city, leveraging it across state and federal dollars to get a bang five bucks. From parks to the lakefront, north, south, east, west, you can see development happening in our city. Again, I'm gonna take this moment right here so we can start the presentation. The MC Milton Reed, could you come up please?
Everybody, let's give Mayor a hand. I also want to welcome everyone to our town hall meeting being held here in the 4th District. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Milton Reed and I work as an advisor to the mayor for economic development and capital improvement projects. So today, we are going to tell you about the exciting things going on in the city of East Chicago, and we're going to let you know why you can be proud to be a resident of East Chicago, where your dollars are going, and also, equally as important, how you as a resident can benefit from the products and services that we deliver to the residents of this city. So we're gonna have a few ground rules that I'd like to tell everyone about. First of all, as, pretty common, but I'd like to say that this is a non-smoking facility. And with us being in the police station, we would ask that you kind of hold off, normally we would say maybe step outside, step back in, but this is a secure facility, so we really don't want as much wandering around. This facility, if you would like to use the restroom, the restrooms I believe are right outside, but just kind of, and then over to the, to my left. But again, try not to wander, this is a secure facility, and officers will kind of be around if you have to ask them a question. And of course, don't do anything tonight to get arrested, because this is a short trip. Just joking. Okay, so, and the next thing is that we are going to have a question and answer period following the presentations, so we want to be respectful of everyone's time here, we don't want to keep you longer than we said, so if you have a question, we ask you to hold on to the question until the end, but you will have ample opportunity to get every question asked and answered after this meeting. All of the department directors and staff are gonna go along to the station where we were, and you may not want to ask your question in a public format, you can go to the one-on-one. Do not leave here without getting a phone number or something to answer your questions, so we're gonna do, we'll kind of be reminding you of that. I would also just like to acknowledge any elected officials that are in the audience. They, I'd like to just maybe wave your hand, we have our councilperson in the back, let's give her a hand, over here. I think I saw the girl up there. Okay, yes she is. We want to thank you all for coming out, because again, we know that you understand what it is to serve and your support, and it really, at some point, it takes all elected officials to some capacity working together, and we acknowledge certainly that's what is done. The mayor has already acknowledged his staff, and I'd like to give this the last acknowledgement I'll give, is our sound crew and multimedia folks, they do a lot to set up, so let's give them a hand as well. So my job is gonna be very, very brief, I'm just gonna keep it moving tonight, so the first speaker that we're going to have tonight is our fire chief for the fire department, Chief Serna, let's give him a hand as he comes to us.
Thank you, Milton. My name's Anthony Serna, Fire Chief, proudly serving as Fire Chief here in the city of East Chicago. I want to take you, we're celebrating our 125-year anniversary, in case you didn't know. I want to take you back, a brief look back in time to sharpen our focus on the present. East Chicago was incorporated as a city in 1893. One of the first orders of business carried out by our founding fathers was the formation of a volunteer fire department. A number of years later, the merging of the volunteer brigades from the East Chicago and Indiana Harbor sides of the city established a new paid professional department, and since 1906, the East Chicago Fire Department continues to stand by the motto, emblazoned on our uniform shoulder patches, which is to save lives and protect property. Now let's fast forward to the 21st century. Since 2010, Mayor Anthony Copeland, as the financial guardian of the city of East Chicago, the Fire Department has totally replaced our entire collection of firefighting apparatus with Northwest Indiana's most modern fleet of frontline attack pumppers and aerial apparatus. Let me tell you how we did that. In 2014, the Fire Department purchased a new attack pumper. In 2015, another new attack pumper. And in 2016, we purchased two brand-new attack pumppers. Last year, we purchased a new 100-foot aerial platform. Additionally, we're set to take delivery of just a couple more months of a half-million-dollar heavy-duty rescue. That's a total investment of over three and a half million dollars in just apparatus alone over the last five years. The East Chicago Fire Department is here to keep you safe, not only with leading-edge equipment, but also with an allocated fire force of 76 highly-trained firefighters. We're currently in the process of filling out our roster with the planned hiring of 15 new recruits. Our firefighters possess certifications with the State of Indiana Department of Homeland Security and Board of Firefighting Personnel Standards, and education in areas such as fire officer strategy and tactics, driver operator pumper and aerial, technical rescue awareness and operation, and hazmat awareness and operation, just to name a few. East Chicago Fire Department firefighters were also trained to deliver basic life support, non-transport care to our citizens. At the insistence of Mayor Anthony Copeland, every sworn firefighter since 2014 must become a State of Indiana certified emergency medical technician within their first year of service and maintain that certification throughout their career. Bringing together East Chicago Fire Department's commitment of firefighter EMTs with our VLS non-transport level of care provided across four fire engines and our heavy-duty rescue, and our new 911 ambulance service provider, Superior Ambulance, which is contracted with the city of East Chicago to provide three ambulances housed here in the city. This results in East Chicago residents receiving the greatest amount of emergency medical services care possible every single day. Another way that the East Chicago Fire Department keeps the city safe is through outreach and public education. As you can see by the pictures on my board there, we're committed to educating our community on fire prevention and life safety. Under the direction of Chief Inspector Henry Ventura, we visit East Chicago schools and host an annual Fire Department open house every year, where thousands of residents have attended. They come to learn about fire safety and receive information from different services, such as ATF Agent Jeffrey Marshall came to us last year with his partner Zelda. We also have the East Chicago Health Department, who's been with us every year that we've had our open house. In fact, last year, the Health Department offered free flu shots and blood pressure checks. Finally, the East Chicago Fire Department keeps the city safe with services we provide beyond 911 response. In partnership with the Red Cross, we are pleased to announce the Home Fire Campaign for the city of East Chicago. The Home Fire Campaign helps save lives by installing free smoke alarms in homes that don't have them, and by educating people about fire safety. Every single day, seven people die in home fires, most that lack working smoke alarms. Sadly, children in the alley disproportionately lose their lives. The American Red Cross wants to improve the odds and save lives. The American Red Cross is doing this by launching this Home Fire Campaign in partnership with the city of East Chicago. This is a great opportunity to increase the safety of the citizens of East Chicago, and it's going to be available to all city residents. See my Deputy Chief Damon Carpenter, who will be here at our table for more information on how to sign up and receive your free smoke alarm today. For the past 112 years, the East Chicago Fire Department has served as citizens with honor and pride. Every day, both line and staff firefighters stand by the motto on our shoulder patch of saving lives and protecting property. And under the direction of Mayor Anthony Copeland and the efforts of the dedicated professionals of the East Chicago Fire Department, we are keeping East Chicago safe today and for the future. If you have any questions or would like further information on any of our programs or services, please see myself or Deputy Chief Carpenter at our table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So as you can see, along with Chief Serna, the first three speakers really talk about, no matter what community you're from, it's always near and dear to the heart, and that's public safety, because everyone wants to be safe where they live. So with no delay, I would like to bring our Police Chief, Chief Frank Smith, to talk about the Police Department.
Good afternoon to everyone today. What I'd like to do is draw your attention to the chart that I just put up here in this office, and basically, this particular chart here is an indication of what's been going on in the city of East Chicago for the past several years. If you look at that chart, look at the numbers, you can see that crimes continue to go down, 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 in the city of East Chicago. And I contribute that to the citizens of this community, and our Patrol and Detective Bureau, and this particular Police Department. We have done some fabulous things, these guys worked effortlessly, and they continue all the time, never giving up, never quitting, not giving the praises that we all always deserve, but we still continue to work and we love this community. The second thing we want to look at is how do we get there? We're asking all of our officers to be more proactive, and what that is basically is that they're out there initiating calls, they're going, they're in areas where they see suspicious activity, they're not waiting to get calls, they're already on top of it. That is what has been a tremendous impact throughout this community. The second thing that they're doing is we have an information specialist, an analyst by the name of David Ortiz. He provides all the general information for us in reference to crimes that are occurring in different parts of the city, different areas. We get that feedback, we pass it down, this enables us to do a better job within the city, okay? One of the things we also want to look at right now is that we're asking all our residents within this community, if you see something, say something! Do not sit back and wait for things to happen or not be a part of the problem. You can get involved very easily, I'm very passionate about us, call us anytime, day or night, 911, it rings, it doesn't stop. These guys never give up, okay? Never. The next thing I want to point out is the technology that we have. We have a device called ShotSpot, where when we get a gunfire in this area, the guys know right on their computer the area, the time, and where that may be. Many of them have that app right on their phone, so they get it on their phone simultaneously, sometimes they get it on their phone even faster. We also have what's called a license plate reader. Before, we had to develop the probable cause, this machine out there is just more or less sitting tool, that as vehicles go by, it scans their license plate. We know now if vehicles are stolen, if the place is fictitious, guys are acting on this technology. We can't wait anymore for them. The mayor's installed a camera system worldwide, I don't want to touch too much on that, but that thing has paid dividends, most recently, it helped solve a homicide. I mean, we can't be any more grateful than the technology that we're getting in reference to things like that. I mean, it's just going beyond what we can think. You put all of this stuff together along with the technology, with the men and women that work, you yield results like this, folks. This is what happens when a community that works together, that get involved, and that constantly say, "Hey, I'm gonna do something about what's going on in my community, I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna make a phone call, you can call us on the tip line, which is 391-8500." There's so many ways that you can get in contact with the police now, it's other than you can send us a letter. We won't stop, we will not give up, we continue to work to make this community better, better every day. The biggest thing now, I'd like to tell you all, is that we also have a citizens academy. It is run by Lieutenant Wilder, she's in the back back there, she's handing out applications if you want to be a part of it, where you can get involved, you can see what we do, why we do, and how we do it. It's a tremendous program, I ask everybody to join and be a part of it. As a matter of fact, if the number of volunteers would just wave their hand, she have people here that's volunteering their time, because they're concerned about this community and they care. That is just tremendous. That speaks volumes to me, okay? We know everybody is concerned about school shootings, I want to touch on that just a little bit. What we're doing next month, we're gonna have our first annual active shooter class. We are getting ready to teach, we have several instructors that are gonna be teaching us what we need to do, why we need to do, and how. One of the things I feel that's making our schools a little safer is that we have active officers that work in our school system already. We also have retired officers in our school system that work. But more importantly, we share information with the schools, so when things happen, we don't always say it, but we make sure they get that information in order to make things better for us all. That's pretty much the end of my speech, folks. If you have any questions, please come see me at the end of the day, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. Thank you and God bless you all.
I think the chief is being modest, because we're in this house, but I'm happy to report with the five men and women of our Police Department, crime is going to die for six years in a row.
Thank you, Chief. So I guess with the few things that you leave tonight, I think one thing the chief said, see something, say something, and then all of us can take some responsibility in doing that. So next, just keep us moving, let's give a round of applause for our Health Department Director, Arneeta Fokes.
Good evening, everyone, how are you doing?
Good.
Good, good to see all your happy faces out there. Again, thank you, Milton, for that. I want to let you know that the Health Department is located at 100 West Chicago Avenue. For those of you that don't know, that's in the Healthy East Chicago Building, next to the Water Department. Our health officer is Dr. Jerry Browning, and what I want to talk to you about, one, East Chicago is one of only two cities statewide that continues to operate a local health department for its residents. We are dedicated to public health and educating our citizens. We offer a wide variety of services that are available to all of our residents of East Chicago. The Health Department is made up of six divisions. I'm gonna talk to you about each division and give you some examples of some of the services that we offer. We're not limited to those, but there's more. I don't want to be before you long, so I'm not gonna give you all of them. First and foremost, the first division that I'll talk about is our animal control. It is our, it is a no-kill facility specializing in domestic stray control of animals. We do registration enforcement, vector control spraying, so when you see the vector control trucks out from Memorial Day through Labor Day, that will be animal control that's out there spraying. We also do removal of deceased animals, better known as roadkill that you see out there. We also do trapping of raccoons and squirrels. We are the only health department in Northwest and Central Indiana that operates an animal control, so that's a plus theory. The second division that is under the Health Department is emergency preparedness. It provides disaster readiness. Residents can volunteer for drills and other activities to promote readiness for, if there's ever an incident of natural or other disasters that's threatening our communities, we do drills and trainings to help the community understand what to do in this crisis. Thirdly, vital records handles all of East Chicago birth certificates and death certificates only. We also offer paternity affidavits and amendments, those are by appointment only. Our other division is immunizations, who offer childhood immunizations for two months old to 18 years of age, and we also do travel international vaccines. One of my other divisions that is very large, which I'll save the last two for last, and that's our inspection division, that handles all retail food and environmental inspections. It also includes food service establishment, temporary food vendors, hotels, gas stations, also lakefront beaches, housing standards, and nuisance complaints. And one of our biggest accomplishments is having, that ECE is having, is our inspector is the only FDA food standardize inspection officer in Northwest Indiana. No one else in Northwest Indiana has that, not even Lake County. It's us, so. And lastly, my nursing division that handles a lot, handles all infectious and communicable disease reporting, TV screenings, STD and HIV testing, blood pressure checks, flu vaccines, health education, and free blood lead testing for all East Chicago residents. The nursing division has tested a total of 2,279 residents, that includes adult and children. We, as far as elevated levels, which is an actual level, is a five, and we only have 39 that have tested elevated, and we do do case management for those children. If you have any questions or concerns, I have our public health nurse in the back, soonly if you can wave your hand, she's there, available for questions, and I am also available in the back. You can see me for any further questions, our hours, operations, everything that you need to know, I'll be at the back to help assist you. Thank you.
Okay, for those of you who just came in, all of the department directors and staff will be after this around the back, so if you have a question, you will be able to ask your question, we will have a short question and answer period, so just be patient with your questions, but don't leave here with something unasked, or a phone number, or something like that. So, moving from our public, our public health section, next we want to talk about things that deal with quality of life. How can you enjoy your neighborhood and let you know the things that are coming in the programs that we have, and some things that should not be overlooked, and certainly if you can't participate, you can tell niece, nephew, grandchild, a child, or something like that. So let's give a round of applause for our Parks Director, Myra Acosta.
All right, it's time to talk about the real fun stuff. So, my name is Myra Acosta, I'm the Director of the Parks and Recreation, and it is a pleasure for me to be here today to talk to you about all the facilities that we have and all the services that we provide to you. So, I'm not sure if you've visited our parks lately, but we have invested five million dollars, and I think if you've been to the parks, you could testify, that we've done a mass amount of improvements to the parks. Washington Park specifically is a good example. We are able to provide shelters now, there's walking trails, there's new playground equipment, and we even have exercise equipment now, available to everyone. And located inside Washington Park is another beautiful facility that we have, our greenhouse. So I'm not sure if anyone has been to the greenhouse, but we're investing a hundred thousand dollars in beautifying this greenhouse, and we also grow our own organic vegetables. So 100% organic vegetables are being grown in the greenhouse, and they are free to all East Chicago residents. So admission to the greenhouse is free, and vegetables are free, so make sure you come out and you visit that facility and take advantage of that. So, we are the only city in Northwest Indiana who has fully functioning greenhouse and a golf course. So I'm not sure if you were aware that we have a golf course, but we have a very beautiful golf course that is very well-maintained. So if you're not an avid golfer, we do have batting cages, and we also have miniature golf, and we have the lowest prices in Northwest Indiana. So if you're looking to have fun with the family, if you have a baseball team, a softball team, then please come out and take advantage of that facility. So, last but not least, we have six community centers. So this year, we will be investing 130,000 dollars to paint and repair the community centers. The community centers offer after-school programming for kids from 5 to 18, we offer senior programming, and we offer summer programming too for the kids 5 to 18, and all this is 100% free to all East Chicago residents, and no other city does that. You should have to pay a large amount for the summer program, and in East Chicago it's completely free, so make sure you visit our community centers, you take advantage of those. And what I'm really, really excited about is that this year, we will be opening two brand-new community centers, that's an eight-million-dollar investment, and they both will be opening this year. So stay tuned for those announcements that we're gonna be making, please come out and join this celebration. And last but not least, we also have a park survey. So every five years, we actually ask the residents to give us feedback on what they would like to see, going out at the parks, at the golf course, any of our facilities, and based on that feedback, we are able to set our goals and objectives of what we're gonna be doing the next five years. So all these improvements that you're seeing is because of stuff that you requested, and thanks to the mayor for actually supporting us, we are able to make those changes. So we hope that you take at least five minutes of your time and participate in the surveys, so in the next five years, you're able to see things that you actually want to see in the parks, because at the end of the day, we're here to serve you, and we want to make sure that you're happy with all the facilities that we have available, mostly free of charge to all of you. So, if you have any questions, please see me at my table. Thank you.
And again, it hurts to meet when my staff get up there and be humble. We are the only city in Northwest Indiana, if not alone Indiana, we not only have one greenhouse, we have two greenhouses, three, it's really four greenhouses, and that's something I learned when I became mayor. We had an organization from Chicago come, and I beg each of you, go look at the greenhouse and you will be amazed. Go look at the greenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And Myra touched on it too, but these new community centers, we took a chance and we went and actually toured the progress to date, these community centers are going to be fabulous. Four million dollars plus, actually, when you count all the engineering costs and everything that goes into it, in these community centers. Nice full-size basketball courts, indoor walking tracks, community rooms, I mean, these are going to be fabulous for the community, these community centers, so look forward to that, they'll be coming up in a couple months, right? All right. So, moving us right along, again, you know, this to some extent, some people thought this area was maybe secret, or not open to the residents, or not as advertised as it could have been, but we want you all to know about the major investments in family fund and entertainment that you could have out at our marina and lakefront area. This is for East Chicago residents, so please give a round of applause for our Marina Director, Natalie Adams.
Good evening, everyone, as a resident of the 4th District, 4th District represents, don't we? Yes. Good evening, again, my name is Natalie Adams. I have had the privilege and the pleasure to work in an environment with a fabulous group of you of Lake Michigan. Under the direction of Mayor Anthony Copeland, it is his goal that the citizens of East Chicago have a welcoming environment to also enjoy the tranquility of the water. At the marina, we have new state-of-the-art boat slips with seasonal rental that includes bathhouses with showers, laundry facilities, social and grilling areas, cable TV and Wi-Fi. For the novice or the skilled fishermen, we have a great fishing pier and a convenient fish cleaning station. We have two-point banquet venue rentals with great views of the lake that seat from 100 to 140 guests. You can hire your own caterer, you can bring your own food. We are in conversations to get the Marina Bar and Grill Restaurant open back up this year. We are also in conversations to do something really exciting, we want to have water rental activities like paddle boating and jet skiing. At George Park Beach, on the other side of Ameristar, we pride ourselves in keeping your beach clean. Yes, this is your beach, and we pride ourselves in keeping it clean. We have systems in place to limit the verb population on the beach during the summer. We clean and sift the sand at least twice a week. There are designated propane grilling areas, public restrooms, phenomenal playground equipment, shelters that are available for rent, and a free splash pad for kids to enjoy. For more, for more details on George Park Beach, you can log on to www.joresbeach.com. We already have a ramp to make the beach handicap accessible, but we are looking at additional access to allow the disabled to actually get out further onto the sand. The beach is open Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. If you have not been to the lakefront in the past couple of years, please come out to George Beach and the marina and enjoy the view. In addition to my duties at the marina and lakefront, I have the pleasure to serve on the special event committee with several other department heads. With the mayor's support and commitment, we try to bring you great events throughout the year. Please stay tuned to all of the East Chicago news at www.eschicago.com and go to special events. So whether it's to the marina, to the beach, to the special events, please come out and enjoy your enjoy your city. Everything that we do, everything the mayor has us do, we do it all for you. If you have any questions, please see me at the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie Adams. She's going to get me for that. Okay, so moving right along, the next person coming up, and for those of you who might have that entrepreneurial spirit in you and you've been thinking a long time about maybe starting a little business or something like that, I want you to kind of queue in to some of the things that can help you, the programs that the city has. Because we are in the process of a major revitalization of our North Harbor District. And revitalization starts with you have to kind of tear everything down, clear out, see what you have, and then you build back up. And certainly, let's give our planning and economic development director, Marina Solario, a hand as he comes in place about someone famous in this department.
Thank you, Milton. How's everyone doing? So these are exciting times in East Chicago, and it's a good time to be an East Chicagoan. If you haven't seen any and all the investments that are going on in the city, it's thank again, thanks again to the staff and more importantly, Mayor Anthony Copeland for letting that vision happen. So I'm here to talk to you about what my department does, which is the Planning and Economic Development Department. You may think that my department has nothing to do with day-in, day-out, daily lives, but it does. One of the main things, if you are looking to put a fence for your house, you have to come to the planning department to apply for that fence application. We will let you know the guidelines, what are the restrictions, things like that. And then you show us where you're going to build the fence, and we let you know whether that is possible or not. So that's one way that we do affect residents. Also, your zoning classification, where you live signifies what you can and can't build, where you can and can't build. So if you're a business looking to move into the Prairie Park District, for example, well, you can't really open up a business in Prairie Park because that's zone residential only. So you're only able to build residential in those zoning classifications. So if you have any questions on what your zoning classification is and what you can and can't do, again, my department, the planning department, is good to tell you what that is. Next, I want to talk about something that we have been doing for a couple of years, but we're really trying to push this this year, which is the facade program. And what this is, is this is for anyone that has a business in the city that has a business building, a building, a commercial building. And we have a citywide program, which is 50% offered for the business owner and 50% you would put in. A total could accumulate to, the city would max out at $25,000, and someone would put in up to $25,000, which would bring it a total investment of $50,000. Now, your project may only be $10,000, and that's to fix a sign, doors, windows, anything that really deals with the facade, to improve the aesthetic, to improve the commercialization of your property, raise the market values, and make the downtown corridors look a lot more pleasing in places that you want to visit. More importantly, there is a harbor-specific program, which is an 80/20 program, and that is more aggressive. And what that is, is that the city puts up 80% of your facade improvement, and you would only put 20. So an example is if your property facade improvement is $10,000, city puts $8,000, and you only put 2. That's unheard of. You also cap out at $25,000, so the city will only put up to $25,000. But again, the goal is to revitalize these corridors. You know, it took a lot of years for these corridors to kind of take a hit, and we're really trying to establish them, re-establish them, and make them areas where you can say, "I remember the harbor, I remember the East Side," and those business districts. And you'll be able to walk, they'll be more vibrant. And so if you're looking to open up a business, that is what my department does also, and I will gladly guide you through that process, let you also know what any available land. So we do have a lot of land that the city has been acquiring. And so when people are looking to open up a business, they might come to my department and say, "Hey, I'm looking to build this." I can easily guide you where I think, where we think the zoning classification meets and where your business would be most successful. So again, if you have any questions, I will be on the side, right there, to answer any questions. And thank you again for coming and to be, being involved and active in what's going on in Chicago. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marina. Okay, so this next director that will be coming forward to you, this is again, I think, a very important department because, you know, some of our programs, they help individuals at large, but this department can do things that can help you in your own individual household. So again, if this is the type of thing that doesn't apply to you, think about a neighbor, think about a niece, think about someone else that you might pass this number to, pass some of these programs to, because residents should be taking advantage of these programs. So let's give a round of applause for our director of redevelopment, Mr. Frank Rivera.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Thank you so much, Milton, for the introduction. I was hoping for a more starlight kind of thing, but that's good. The city of East Chicago has about four different types of programs. I wish this brochure could be much more detailed, but I want to provide to you a lot of information, okay? Specifically, there are things in here that I don't have, but I want to mention it because it all affects us here as department heads. Okay, four particular programs on this brochure is homeowners incentive program, the exterior renovation facade program, CDVG, and home funded programs, and the Markstown Renaissance Plan. Okay, currently, the homeowners incentive program is the city of East Chicago offers down payment assistance. We offer a home buyer's purchasing, existing or reconstruction of homes for about $10,000, we give you the down payment assistance. Now, if you're an employee of the city, we give you another $5,000 as an incentive, which we put into this package, and that'll give you about $15,000. Now, you have to make this your primary residence though for at least five years. As for those who are interested in buying a new home, new constructed, we're looking at about $25,000. And those who are city employees, we're giving you another $5,000, so we're talking about $30,000. And this, you have to be a primary residence for at least 10 years. Now, the thing is that there's some particularly good things about this because we're going to give you a down payment program where you have to take a workshop for at least eight hours. It's once a month for eight hours, and it's on a Saturday, and I know how we feel about our Saturdays. Okay, and it's from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And to get information, you could talk to us over here at the table. I have this Loretta Parker out in the audience. She's my down payment assistance representative, and she is very, very great at this program. The home buyer is required to provide proof of residency each year so that we don't have to go hunt for you. We want you to give us information that you're living there. Eligible city employees must be a full-time employee for at least one full year, okay, to get that additional $5,000. Now, interesting, there's a number of participants that we've received for down payment assistance from program year 2012 to 2017, 219 participants. I don't see it as participants. I see it as home buyers who are placing tax dollars here in our city for all these good programs that we are introducing to you. Total funds that we've expended from 2012 to 2017 is $2.3 million. We have brochures over here and other information showing every year as to how we've increased our home buyers program, every single year. And that's because of the mayor that we have here who loves his city, that we all love our city, okay? Citywide exterior renovation facade program. Funds are to positively impact and stimulate the whole entire area to increase overall real estate. We like to improve the quality of life and housing stock in the residential neighborhoods. We want to make the neighborhood attractive for new investments. We promote homeownership. We generate neighborhood participation to ensure benefits to economic activities and things of that nature. We target to prioritize those homes that show signs of wear and tear and needing exterior repairs. Now, the interesting thing about this is citywide, we're looking at forgivable loans of at least $40,000. Forgivable loan, all you have to do is live in these homes for a certain period of time, about seven years. And then there's examples of repairs that I put in your brochure, like soffits, roofing, chimney flashing, phosphores, gutters, downspouts, bricks, peck, everything that you can imagine on your home, electrical, all kinds of things. CDVG and home funds. If you go onto your brochure, because I left one on your chair, you'll see that there's three different particular tiers that we have here. One of the things that we concentrate on is that we have a lot of people who are low-income who really, really need a lot of assistance. And so we decided to create three tiers in order for us to increase the grants and to increase the dollars in order for us to expend more repairing your home. And so I'm not going to go through all three of them. I think you can have it right there listed so you can measure that. We do offer ramp programs. Currently, we offer about $15,000 up to $25,000. And we also offer emergency programs. And we currently offer $3,000, $5,000 grants out there to $20,000. And we're not currently working on the Markstown Renaissance Plan. But before I leave off on the Renaissance Plan, we know how important Markstown is. We're going to be spending our time to make sure that we stabilize that area. But I wanted to give you some additional information that's not on this brochure. Everyone up here, we give them money in order for the summer programs to go, in order for jobs to be established during the summer. We also provide different types of dollars, so that all of us are providing services for you. In so many words, yeah, I'm the money, man. All because of the great mayor that we have.
Thank you, Frank. Let's give Frank another hand. And we know, and we know that Frank has a lot of programs, and so please stop back. And he mentioned Loretta. Loretta is very good at what she does, and she does not have the answer. She'll know how to point you to the right person. So that was a lot of information packed into a small amount of time. Stop back, check out the brochure, and ask your questions. Okay, so moving us right along, this department, I guess you really wouldn't know what this department does until there's a bump in the road, I'd say, literally, a bump in the road. So let's give a round of applause for our chief engineer, city engineer, William Allen.
Thank you, thank you, Milton. My name is William Allen. I work out of the engineering department. Basically, what we do is manage major construction or reconstruction projects. So this involves reconstructions, which include surface work and underground work, which is for the surface work, new concrete sidewalks, curb, ADA ramps, landscaping like trees inside. For underground, this is new water mains, sewers, and also including fiber. Recently, with our reconstruction projects, we've been incorporating fiber conduit to also enhance our infrastructure. For past projects that were reconstruction, we currently completed Wagon Reading, which was a $2 million project. Also Aldis Roundabout, which was a $3 million project. Two million was given to us from the state, and one million was funded from the city. And this sits near the marina and the Arcola Middle property east of the Aldis Street. Resurfacing project that was most recent was Euclid Avenue, from Chicago Avenue to Michigan Avenue. This was approximately a $2 million project. What was done was resurfacing, new decorative crosswalks, the sewer was relined, and multiple manholes were reconstructed. Last year, in 2017, we did approximately $750,000 worth of resurfacing. And this year, we have on the list many streets, some on that list will be Fur, 140th, and the completion of Grand Boulevard, and this is, you know, the entire stretch. Along with reconstructions and resurfacing, we also play a hand in infrastructure for buildings going up of the community center project that was recently mentioned that started last year, two new centers. One where Heritage Hall, which is tied in 145th, will be redone. Also, a new location is on Guthrie where Broadway intersects the street. These will include soccer, basketball, volleyball, and then multipurpose rooms and kitchenettes. Some upcoming reconstruction projects that we have in store for this year is Guthrie, which stated before will be water mains, sewers, concrete, landscaping, asphalt, and new decorative lighting. On Columbus Drive at the US 12 Pedestrian Bridge, which is currently owned by the state, this will be a $2.5 million project, which is basically just demolishing the existing bridge structure and replacing it with a new ADA compliant, safe route across the street at that intersection. This also is going to include new recreational landscaping and lighting. Columbus Drive itself is also going to be redone. This includes intersection improvement projects, and every intersection that has a signalized traffic light, there will be bump outs, landscaping, all the sidewalks will be replaced. The bump outs allow pedestrians to safely look and check and see if traffic is coming down the street without actually being in the street. This is approximately a $4 million project. And this is also including new asphalt as well. Other than reconstruction projects, repaving, we also handle a number of right-of-way applications in our department, which is right-of-way, heavy load, handicap, driveway applications, dumpster applications. If you have any questions on any of the upcoming projects in either 2018, 2019, we continue to plan, so your feedback is definitely welcome so that we can continue to improve our streets in East Chicago. All right, thank you. And also in 2019, we have basically the whole redoing of Indianapolis Boulevard from Chicago, I'm sorry, from Columbus Drive all the way to Michigan Street. That will be our portion to redo. We're currently are getting $5 million from the state, and this will be a major project. Right now, it's approximately $14 million. This will incorporate a new sewer where it is beyond repair, it needs to be redone, water main, decorative lighting, sidewalks. And then also, what is being proposed by the state is also to reduce the lane numbers. Instead of four lanes, it will be reduced to three. One continuous turning lane going down the center with one lane going in each direction. And this will be done in between the blocks of 152nd and Columbus Drive. Again, any questions, please feel free to visit me in the back corner. I'll be there. Thank you.
So get ready, this summer and next summer, when we really say part in our dust, we mean it. There's a board over there that has some of the features of Columbus Drive, and what's going to happen on Columbus Drive, we're going to do improvements to the roundabout. I mean, the entry sequence into the city is just going to be beautiful. We'll come right in with the pedestrian bridge, so I know that's right here in this area. Many of you, many of us, I say, I'm in this district as well, we travel there every day. It's going to be a great thing happening, and we want to start mobilizing on that project, I believe, in about a week or two, week or so. So Columbus Drive, get ready. Moving right along, again, another department that doesn't get as much praise for the work that they do, in my opinion, but what they stopped doing, and certainly we all know, as relates to our garbage pickup, stone removal, a little bit of everything. So just a stand-up guy who has come in and really has rallied his troops to give us even a higher level of work and commitment. Let's give for our Public Works Director, Keith Selby. Let's give him a hand.
Thank you, Milton. As Milton, my name is Keith Selby. I have the pleasure of serving as your Public Works Director. As you can see from my slide there, we are responsible for streets and sanitation, but in essence, what we do have to do is make this city clean. And I try my best, as well as my folks try their best, to achieve this, but we need you guys' help as well. What I've done is I've kind of broken down three different areas in which I want to touch on, just kind of briefly. We get calls on it, and they want to know how we go about doing it. First being snowplow plowing, the second is street sweeping, and then finally, I'm going to talk a little bit about our spring cleanup. Our protocol for snow removal, or snow plowing, is just pretty simple. It's pretty much like you guys do. You guys watch TV, the Weather Channel. So we watch that channel and kind of get forecasts on wind, potential snowfall, times and dates, and we and we prepare our troops to get ready to deploy once that happens. Uh, once that actually happens, there's a couple of things that we do. Uh, we, uh, first go through what we call our priority routes. The priority routes are basically around the hospitals, the police station, the fire department, and then we open up what we call our main arteries. The main arteries being Columbus Drives and so forth. After we do that, it usually takes a little while for us to do that, then we go into our residential areas. Uh, the residential areas are broken up into seven different zones. Uh, we send a couple of trucks out in each zone to actually clear the snow, uh, depending on if it's, you know, we need solid, or if we actually need to plow the actual street. Some areas are a little bit difficult to get in with the bigger trucks, so we do smaller trucks. Uh, but, uh, the last snowfall tested us. We were, uh, we, uh, we were around the clock, I think about forty-eight hours straight, trying to keep the roads open for you folks. Uh, the second thing I want to talk a little bit about is street sweeping. It's that time of the season, uh, when we're looking to try to clean the curb areas. So, I'm definitely going to need you guys' help, uh, here in the fourth district, as well as throughout the city. Uh, so, the one thing I want to do is when you guys see this sign posted in your actual areas, please adhere and abide by it. This mayor, as well as our administration, has been very lenient in, uh, not doing the bottom part. The bottom part talks about tolling. Uh, this year's going to be a little bit different, and, um, we want you guys to hear about this. Uh, what that does is it allows us to, you know, to sweep the streets a lot quicker. We don't have to duck in and out of actually cars that are not being removed, uh, and it, and it'll make it a lot faster and efficient way to actually get the city clean.
Tell them the real deal. What's going on?
If you do not, if you do not owe them, we will tow you.
Yep.
You're going to get towed.
And that's at the owner's expense.
This year, say what we mean, and mean what we say. You was testing the system out at first, it worked, but now, you'll say what we mean, and mean what we say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, man.
So, um, so definitely, uh, abide by the actual signs. Uh, typically what we do is we do a couple of blocks, depending on how many blocks the actual street stretches out. Uh, one side is going to be one day, and then the other side will be a second day. Uh, so, please look for that to happen. Again, the benefit is cleans your curbs. Uh, we have a lot of rentals, uh, properties now, and we don't get the, the homeowners getting out in front cleaning up like they used to do. Uh, so, who's us in my department, Public Works, to, uh, to do these street sweepings? Uh, the final thing I want to talk about tonight is our, our spring cleanup. Uh, we have some flyers in the back, but, uh, the fourth district, uh, you're, you're actually slated for April 2nd through the 6th. Uh, for those that have alleys, we ask you to discard your stuff in the back in your alley. Uh, for those that don't have alleys, actually put it in the front, and we'll be scouring the actual district to clean those things up. Uh, so, those, you know, this is our routine for you guys to go through your garage, anything that you actually want to discard, and, you know, you can save yourself some time and effort, because we'll do it for you. Uh, in closing, uh, as the chief, as, as, as one of the chiefs said, uh, help me help you guys. I, I live here in East Chicago, and I love East Chicago. I've been one raised here. I like to see it clean. So, if you see something, say something. Dial 311 and report it. Uh, that system, uh, actually has an app as well that allows you to, uh, report, take pictures. It's a great application to use, and it helps my department to help you guys. Uh, cut down on the cause of, of, of us being reactive, uh, we can be a little bit more proactive. Uh, in, in closing, um, if you have some additional questions about some of our procedures or some of our protocols, I'll be in the back of the room at my table, along with Laura. Uh, raise your hand, Laura, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions for you. Uh, thank you.
Okay, so, moving us right along, we only have, these will be our last two speakers, and then maybe we'll have a few closing remarks before our, um, question and answer period. Uh, I want to bring up, uh, Director of our IT Department. So, some wonderful things going on with IT that we've just got to get the word out, so you can take benefit of these things that have been happening in IT and understand how IT affects your day-to-day life, as well as our multimedia director. So, Kevin Klosik, Director of IT, and Steve Segura, Director of our multimedia. Let's give them a hand, Keith.
Hello, fourth district. Hey, this is where I'm from too. I love you guys. Um, okay, first I want to talk to you a little bit about what, something that Keith touched on, and that is the 311 app. Everyone got a phone? It's on Apple and on Android, and, um, it's really simple. You just launch the application, just like this, and you'll see that little logo, and it gives you communication to every little part of our city, whether it be the mayor's office, uh, our Facebook, our website, um, council, everything. You take a picture of your issue, it gets reported to the proper department, you get a notification if the issue's been addressed, if it's been handled. So, you, you know, there's a number of things you can report with this application. It's very important to help us do our job. Uh, the other thing I want everyone to do is if you have a phone and you want to be notified about everything that happens in the city, like today we sent out a notification on our new system called Nixle. Um, it's real simple. You just text to this number, 888-777. If you want to do it with me, we can all do it together right now. And then just type the words EC events, and you'll be notified about all our, anything happening in the city, whether it be a street closure, um, you know, uh, potholes, avoid this area, uh, an event happening. It, it could be a number of things, but it's, uh, you can't say you don't know about something, because you will get a notice through this little system. And it's free, and you can opt out at any time.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, once again, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Kevin Klosik. I'm the Director of Information, Information Technology for the city. And tonight, I'd like to, uh, enlighten you on a couple of technology projects that have been going on, uh, throughout our city. Uh, this first project, um, this man right here, our mayor, uh, ever since I've been around, he's always stressed the interest of needing and wanting to invest dollars into your public safety. And, uh, so, with this first project, uh, it's been a project going on for the last two years, and we have invested one-point-five million dollars in, uh, installing roughly seven-hundred high-speed, uh, high-resolution, uh, security cameras throughout the city. These cameras have been installed in areas such as, uh, our parks, um, select intersections throughout the city, as well, as well as, uh, public facilities. And I can say, you know, just briefly touching on what our police chief has touched on earlier, that this investment has, uh, grown great dividends thus far. And, uh, we continue to, uh, to build on that endeavor by, uh, we're currently, uh, investing, uh, installing cameras, uh, within your neighborhoods. Uh, so, you'll see, you know, as time goes on, like, these cameras will be strategically placed as well within your neighborhoods to, uh, to help build the secure, uh, and, and public safety of, uh, of our city. The second project that I want to touch on, uh, it's, it's a project that's been going on, um, with our department, with the city, for quite some time. And, uh, when the mayor came in, he committed to wanting to complete this project. Uh, and that was the installation of high-speed fiber optic network that, uh, the city went on. And, uh, so, uh, through the last couple of years, that commitment was made, and, uh, we can safely say that as of July, uh, our city has become the first city in North West Indiana to complete a seventeen-mile high-speed fiber optic network throughout the city. And that, that investment has, has paid great dividends, uh, on the city site thus far. Um, we've cut, uh, quite a bit of communication costs that, that we previously had to invest in some of our, uh, major carriers throughout the area. That's all been replaced with, uh, high-speed fiber communication between our buildings, our municipal buildings. The seven-hundred cameras that I touched on, uh, if we were to have to invest, uh, communicating with those cameras in those sites, um, I can just tell you that we're in abundance of tens of thousands of dollars of communications that would have to be spent for a year, you know, throughout one year. And, uh, we, uh, we've alleviated that by, um, implementing the high-speed, uh, fiber optic network. And the other side of the, uh, the network is that, uh, we were able to, uh, we, we laid, uh, quite a bit of, of fiber, and so there was fiber that we have available that we want to make available to public use. And so, uh, just two weeks ago, um, through the Board of Works, we entered into an agreement with a company called NITCO, and what they are doing is they're managing our high-speed, uh, public available network, and through that management, they are making available, uh, the option of high-speed internet service, uh, phone service, uh, long-distance service, and video service. Uh, and, and I've received calls because this, this public notice has gone out, and a lot of residents are starting to inquire, are we going to be able to, you know, acquire this internet service, uh, at, at a, uh, as an alternative to what we may have already? And, uh, as NITCO has expressed throughout their agreement, um, they are committed to reaching into the neighborhoods and eventually building out their network to service the neighborhoods. Our fiber network right now is centered around the business districts of Indianapolis Boulevard, Chicago Avenue, Columbus Drive, Main Street. So, their, their immediate, um, impact can be seen, uh, with the, uh, the businesses throughout that area as, as targeted, uh, you know, customers, if you will. But they do, they have ensured us that they will be reaching out to the neighborhoods, and if that interest is there, uh, they're committed to investing, uh, to build out the infrastructure and to carry that forward as an option to the residents. So, with that, um, I, I can, yes?
Kevin, some also partnerships reach, what else?
Right. The, the good thing about this agreement, it's funny because when they brought it before the Board of Works, most agreements, uh, in contracts, there's, there's an amount of money that we're paying them to provide a service. The unique part about this agreement is, uh, we're paying nothing. As a matter of fact, uh, the city is receiving, uh, a, a twelve percent, uh, return of the gross sales that they, that they have in the city. So, we're not paying them anything to do, you know, to, to manage this, and, and, uh, to go a step further, uh, we're receiving, you know, a, uh, a residual as to, uh, recoup some of our investment. So, with that, um, if, if anyone has any additional questions, we can be seen, you know, in the back of the room. I'd be glad to talk to you about anything that you may have, and, and look at the agenda, and I think I'm the last one up here. So, with that, I, I like to, I like to give credit, it's due, and, you know, you all sat here all night, applauded all of us for, uh, for all of our efforts. Um, I, I think you can take the time to applaud yourselves for taking the time to, for taking the time to come out and, and share your time and express your interest in, uh, the ongoing health of your city. Thank you.
Okay, so now I think that was our last speaker. We can go into our question and answer period, and if you just raise your hand, I'll come around with a microphone, and you can state your name. A couple of things, so just, so, so, we want to be respectful of everyone. What, don't raise your hand yet. Let me get this, a couple of little things out. Uh, one question, if there's a follow-up or rebuttal or anything like that, we want to make sure everyone gets a chance. We also want to get to the tables in case someone's uncomfortable asking in a public format. We want to be fair to everyone. We also want to save a few minutes we're going to have, so hopefully everyone has a ticket. We want to have a little raffle with some door prizes for people that came in. Uh, we are asking that these door prizes, the only qualification you need to get this other than your ticket is a resident of East Chicago. So, make sure that, uh, that you can, uh, you can do that too. But Mayor, if I may, I know this is in the district of Marina. Can you come up and tell us about the investment at Block Stadium real quick? That's a pretty huge in this district, and, and they're a million, I don't know exactly how much, but, uh, just very briefly. If you didn't get a ticket, maybe go and grab, if you didn't get a ticket, go and grab it now. But, uh, just real quick, Marina.
A raffle.
A raffle ticket, correct.
So, for many of you that are living in this area, you see, uh, Block Stadium, uh, is being tarp'd up, uh, currently, and it is being sandblasted and painted. Uh, the resurgence of baseball is something that, uh, this administration, uh, the mayor, and, uh, the citizens of East Chicago would like to see back. And so, this is really a stepping stone to what, um, will be a bright future for baseball here in the city. It is approximately four million dollars in investment. It will be ADA, um, accessible, so there will be seating, uh, for the disabled. Um, there will be ramps, uh, fully accessible, concession stands, some retail space, um, and then some community space, uh, for use also, along with the actual field, scoreboard, all of that is new. And so, we really hope that hopefully, um, as the ensuing months occur and as you begin to see the resurgence of Block Stadium, that you appreciate one of the really biggest gems that the city has. Um, and so we are happy to announce that baseball will, will be coming again here to the city. So, uh, yeah. I mean, one, one thing I wanted to add is that, you know, all our facilities that we are building with the city are all going to be wired with this fiber that, uh, that the IT department discussed about, so that every area is ready for the future. Um, your parks now, you're able to go to your parks, and there's Wi-Fi available, so for free, for its residents at the lakefront, you know, at City Hall. So, take advantage of those opportunities. It's unheard of for a city this size to have that. So, thank you.
This is Andrew's first, and I get to ask from our Building Department, for those of you who have rental properties, April, April sixteenth is the rental registration deadline. I think the fee goes up after that, so that's just on behalf of James Porter, our team.
James, fifteenth, right?
April sixteenth.
I mean, technically, I would be putting around tax debt.
Yeah, it's April fifteenth, Sunday, but we're giving you the sixteen on that Monday.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, I know, I miss ask you, uh, is if you want to state your name, and, excuse me, I'm trying to slide by here.
I have a question for the mayor or the police department. Since we have this big facility here, I, this is my first time in here, but why do when they get picked up, anybody that had committed a crime, they have to go to Crown Point and not stay here in the city? Who reaches dollars?
Jesus, come, come, come to the podium, Jesus. What happened during that time, man, is that we had a problem with our heating system, and therefore, we didn't want to infringe on anyone's rights. So, what we did temporarily, we sent everybody to Crown Point until we got that fixed. Now that is fixed, every person that we usually arrest, unless it's a serious felon, we bring them right here to the Chicago Police Department's jail.
Thank you. Okay, I think there's no pass, who's next?
Oh, man, they already know my name. I'm Hollywood. Here we go. Um, I'll stand, I need to stand, my legs are locked. Excuse me.
All right, I'll hold that for you.
Um, Mayor, with all due respect, hello everyone, good evening. Um, I'm here, first of all, as a lifelong resident, and I have to say thank you for the meetings. Um, and I'm coming as, I learned from you, and I'm saying this out of respect. I recall watching cable when you had Citizens in Action. You were very honest. And I have to be honest, as chief spoke, we're here united, we have to protect each other. I started, I had no intention, as sick as I am, to fight for the health of everybody. But EPA bought us as residents out. Just as you found out, you weren't mayor in 2009, this got dropped on your lap, this got dropped in our lap in 2016 about the contamination. And this is a lot worse than what we expected. And now recently, with what we just found out in 2016, now with DuPont, I'm asking, as all the other mayors, with all the other super funds nationally, for you and your head departments to support the CAG, which is a guideline. We are officially, we were orientated by EPA, we had an orientation class, we were formed, the residents stood up, we are fighting. If we could institute something like in Chicago, that if we could get parking stickers if they're visiting, because they're taking our parking spots. I have a handicap spot in front of my home and people without a handicap plate are taking it and I have a transport that drops me off and I can't even walk on my walking spot. So if there's something that could be done, there's too many transient and Illinois plates. And that's a concern of mine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me say what the CAG and BAN would, names, but a couple faces. Just recently, we met and you asked for a meeting at the mayor's office, our secretary have reached back out to you. And we are in the process of having a meeting with CAG. But we have always been united and in one accord. I think if you look, the mayor, CAG, all of us would have been all the way down to the state cabinet. Different public meetings, dealing with the issue of the lead. I tell you, the greatest thing we can do is when we have that one-two punch, because they can look at the citizens and see the ones affected and see the sincerity in your eyes and you can convey a message that I couldn't. And when they saw that one-two, then you start seeing things happening. So again, my thanks to you.
Spacey Winfield, precinct committee person in Sunnyside, K C thirty. Mayor, I love my park. I love my park. I'm happy because I'm always active with our parks. The only concern that I have is the building with the residents vote. There's been barricades there for a year. As the summer, as it gets warm, now the children are climbing up on top of that building. So I have a concern about that building.
But are we getting the CAG where it's coming, because Mr. Salvi can tell you. Where is he at?
We just come up. So you know this ain't make believe, he gonna tell you. We just actually appeared before the Board of Public Works to get those roofs there in Sunnyside actually replaced. There is also a facade issue that we'll take care of, I would say, in the next couple of weeks.
Chief Smith, I know the people see the, about the shot, the shooter.
Yes, sir.
Shots fired. And if you could just let the residents know why they don't hear sirens, because I get, people call me and say, well, there's a shooting, but there's no sirens coming through the neighborhood.
Sometimes our officers want to run silent and basically they won't have a siren on, so just hopefully that maybe they can sneak up and catch an individual. Sometimes they may have a siren. So it just depends on the nature of the call, what's going on, how much information they have in order to answer that call properly, that's all.
Okay, I'm trying to make a round to when I see him first, so Mrs. Lopez.
Good evening. And to our mayor and all of the department heads and audience here, it is a pleasure of mine to live in East Chicago today. Why? Because it's clean. This place is clean and I am very, very proud of it. I live on Cardinal Drive and there is a problem there. Number one, from Hidalgo Lane to Alder Street has become a Columbus Drive. A thoroughfare. And we need camera to watch this travel because it is like a speed through. So I hope that of course that you will take this advice and come and put a camera. And I guarantee you that the police will be able to stop all of that that's running through the neighborhood. I don't know, it's because the early mornings, we get the traffic that's going to Block Junior High School. So that's heavy, but that's a little bit quieter. But later on, from Hidalgo Lane to Alder Street, it is Columbus Drive. Now there's two things, the camera or either the speed bumps. I don't think we want too many speed bumps because that will wreck our car.
The city, you hear it, you're loud and clear. He'll tell you something that we're getting ready to do, it's not speed bumps, but it's like, it's a raised, what would you call it?
Raised intersection.
A raised intersection.
Or the proper term is speed table.
Speed table? Speed table that we'll be implementing. The speed bumps is kind of high and you're right, when you go and you hit them and you come down. This is like a gradual thing that take you up, but if you go too fast, it has the same effect. But since a lot of people have the low effect, tires and everything, you know, just the speed bump does major damage. But we are going to this speed table, he called, this is a technology we're getting ready to implement across the city.
Okay, I got a question over here. You hear me back over here.
Yes, Mayor. I live on the forty-seventh block at Parish and we have a lot of contractors in our neighborhood over in Calumet. And they're really doing a shipyard job out there. I mean, we got haci construction, which I haven't complained to Will, that before winter time, they were just going to leave the sidewalks dug up and not give you the access from the sidewalk to the curb then to your vehicle. Then they came through on some houses, you got the Buffalo Box cutoff sticking that high above the ground where when kids play, they're going to trip over or get impaled by it. Then the government came through and now for some strange reason, you got all septic lines being dumped in the alley. And then if that ain't bad enough, then what the heck you guys had, these guys put in the lights, there's no uniformity on the lights. You miss the bases. You put them in some places and every place there's a park. By Riley Park, they don't have a base. On Griselli, over here in the harbor, if you go around Washington Park, you'll see that there's no bases on the bottom. And Besseillon Center doesn't have any bases. And what that does is when you mow your lawn, it's a lot easier to go around that base and weed, whack it, than it is trying to get underneath there where everything's growing out of it.
Well, do you have an answer? A, B, C, N, D?
There's question and answer incoming.
So I did speak with the contractor when it came to the service walks. They have been replaced, that's something that won't happen again. The only reason why it was left open was because of a line item that had to be established and because of the timing. But it was towards the end of the construction season. So that has been done and we're working to not have that happen again. As far as the base covers for the lights, I was aware about the one on Parish that you informed me on. I'll have to take a look at the other ones, I wasn't aware of those. And then, okay, the Buffalo Boxes, those will be inspected by the water department, but they have the caps on them, all they have to do is just, you know, depress them into the grass.
Okay, so why don't we, just so we can keep everybody going, that sounds like a kind of some one-on-one.
That was a one-time thing, it won't happen again, I promise.
And so again, that is a good example, see something, say something, we want you to connect with Will, we got a lot more people that we want to talk. So I'm going to go right here, Representative Coon, right back over here, and then in the back for you.
Thank you. Earl Harris, State Rep, House District Two, I'm going to follow your rule, one question. But I have a couple comments. Ms. Lopez, just an FYI, Senator Randolph and I continue to work on things in terms of the lead issue, East Chicago, in terms of talking to the governor and other people, so that's not something we have forgotten about. Next year will be budget year, so we'll hopefully be able to use some of the financial aid too. And I also want to congratulate and thank everyone for all the wonderful work that's happening here in East Chicago, it's very impressive. And when we talk to the governor, lieutenant governor, et cetera, we're talking about the great things that are happening here. Which leads to my question. One of the things that I've been talking about and pushing is tourism and Northwest Indiana in general, but obviously what's going on in East Chicago and improvements that's going on here. Tourism is a $12.2 billion industry in Indiana and I don't think we get enough out of it here. But if you manage what's going on at the Marina and the lakefront, can you tell us a little bit more about the plans in terms of tourism and getting people that don't necessarily live here to come here?
Well, one of the problems that I don't want to mention the direct, well, Balisteros, I'm due to sit down and talk to Balisteros about that. You're right that certain other cities around us get their fair share of recognition from the bureau, but we don't. So I'm set to meet with him on that very issue.
And then one other quick thing for everybody, the Black Caucus does town halls every year, so we're in the process of planning those. We are ninety-nine point nine percent sure we're going to do one here in East Chicago on April fourteenth, but I'll keep you up close.
Thank you, sir. We acknowledge our elected officials, Earl, and let's give him a hand.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello, how you doing, David?
I'd like to say that I'm very proud of Washington Park.
Thank you.
And right across the street, I keep a eye on it, pretty much. One of the things that I suggest for Washington Park is putting in crime watch signs within the park, through the pathway, and also the people that take their dogs that don't clean up after themselves. You do have signs at the entrance of the parks, but if you look at the writing, it's very small. And if they get stopped by the police or something, they can't say, well, I don't know that. That and I think a lot of the old signs around the park that says resident parking or after a certain time you can't park, they're all old, they're faded, they're rusty.
Well, as we speak, we're getting all new signage for all of our parks. You will come up, Myra, she can attest that we're getting a new sign, should I say, Moreno? Are you in Moreno? Which one? You good with the signage? You too, Moreno? That's something we've been actively doing now, getting new signage for all of our parks. Brand new signage.
And then one more thing, the buses, the public buses that run through Parish Avenue, ever since they rerouted, whoever drives them, they drive too fast. And that's, that's pretty bad because we have a lot of kids in the park.
Okay, he's here, you're loud and clear, and Moreno and Myra can touch on the new signage that we had coming.
So in all the parks where you see the name of the park, the arch signs, let's say like Washington Park or Sunnyside Park, right in the middle of that is going to be a display case. So the display case is going to have the park rules and it also going to have a map of the park and of the amenities that are offered within the park.
Next question is back here.
And we, so furthermore, we completely agree with you in terms of the signage with the rules. We know that's very important because one of the biggest things that the police have stated is, well, we don't have visible signs that state that these are the rules, we cannot help you enforce them. And so we have acknowledged that and we will for sure. The rules will be front and center on every corner that you're coming into those, especially the bigger parks, also that people fully understand there's no alcohol, you know, there's no, the time that you can even be in the park, done to dust, dusted on, things like that. So be looking out for that this year for sure. All the parks will be getting new signage, rules and maps that show the amenities within the parks.
Okay, we have, we go ahead, I'm sorry, I can't hear anything else, but we got to keep it moving a little bit, we have about five to four people to have questions.
So dogs, by city ordinance, are now allowed in the parks?
Right, they're there all the time.
That is correct, and that is something that we are reevaluating because with the resurgence of the parks, there are, there are responsible users, you know, that are using the parks the way that they're supposed to and then there's the irresponsible ones. So to change, we would have to go and amend that ordinance for that, for you to be able to have dogs. We're not suggesting bringing dog, we're also not, right. And so that will come in when we get our signs put in and then hopefully we'll be working with the city council to amend that.
Okay, so we have a few more of this, we're going to get to the wrap, we have a question here and a question here, and then we'll have a closing, closing comment.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm a thirteen-year-old, I live on one hundred and forty-third Parish Avenue, I'm a local street from the park as well. Last summer there was an incident. A young lady, fourteen years old, was sexually assaulted in the park. By me having a teenage daughter and she affiliates and associates herself with that nurse as well. As a resident, nobody was notified. Do the people working in hospitals and people working in, you know, on the beaten, in different places, I just got wind of her, but none of the residents, and it's a lot of kids.
You know what, since this is involving a kid, I'm going to let the chief talk to you one-on-one, but the incident is, maybe didn't occur exactly how you might have heard it, but since we respectfully talked about the kid, he'll tell you more in detail, but the incident did not happen exactly how you saw it. But it did make me aware of that since we're putting all of these quality of life things in our park, this is why we got cameras throughout the whole park system now. We put them in there and when we tell you that we put up seven hundred cameras, we're going to put up three hundred more, we're not being Big Brother. We don't have cameras where somebody's sitting at the screen just watching you move around. These cameras report to us in real time. Like for instance, if you said that incident happened to the young lady right there and it happened today at twelve o'clock, then they could go back and play the footage back to today at twelve o'clock. So we don't have people just sitting there monitoring you like Big Brother. But the cameras you will see in ensuing years is going to make this city safe, along when you join it with ShotSpotter. There was a time when somebody would shoot a gun in here and they would call the cops and the cops would show up at their house, but really the gunfire happened two blocks down. Now when they shoot the gun, we can tell you exactly on the block, if it's in front of the house, in back of the house, on the side of the house, where, and now the police can come from different directions and come merging in. That's why I say sometimes it's sirens on, lights on, sometime it isn't. But when we put all of this technology together, I think that's the reason why, and along with the new equipment that we've invested in, training of our officers. Again, I'm in that house and I might as well give kudos where it's due, this is the reason why crime has gone down six years in a row.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think, kind of getting the signal, I know there are a few more questions, we have to stay on time because we want to be respectful every one time. We're going to have a last question here, then we'll do the wrap. If you have a question though, please, let's go to the person, come to me, back. You want a more question right here?
No, I'm asking Terry, come up.
Oh, okay, Terry, all right. Talk to me, okay.
Hi, my name is Matthew Span, I'm still in New York, at forty-nine blocks. And in the alley, I've talked with Mr. Allen a few summers now, been a few times, and he's been having people come out and try to remedy the water situation from all of the pumps that are coming and going into the sewer. But evidently, the contractors that he's using, I don't think they have an idea. I've talked to them twice when they tried to fix it and was explaining to them what was going to happen if they didn't do it a certain way. And I'm not an engineer, but common sense would tell you, you would have to pit it toward the sewer. They have not done it one time. And they've got to come, I even told them, I let them dig up my brand new sign. But anyway, we've still got the same situation and we've got all that water still sitting out there, except for it's running on my property which can't stay. So I'm thinking they're going to come back this summer and hopefully get a contractor that knows how to pit that alley, to have the water run toward the sewer. And the next thing when I ask, I stay across from that DuPont property, they're going to be cleaning that area up pretty soon, and they're saying that they're going to take all of that polluted stuff that they're taking out of the ground and there's just places, someplace else out there instead of taking it away. Which makes no sense to put it back on our property. And so I ask that you don't let any other, I know they're doing redevelopment out there, no air pollution, no ground pollution, if nothing else, just put a warehouse out there with nothing, no pollution.
Well, that I guarantee you, I tell people, one of the hardest decisions I had to make as mayor is when the EPA came in and they said they were going to clean West Cali Bay up, they were going to clean it in place with the people who was there. And when I seen the high lead levels and all like that, I told them, no. That was one of the hardest decisions I had to make. I tell people, one of the worst rumors my mother gave me is when I told her I was going to run away from home. going to run away from home. And, and in essence, I had to tell people to leave their homes so that they would be safe. That was the toughest decision I made. I, I tell people that problem was around 43 years, but under this administration, we have actively, uh, uh, pushed the EPA to cling to residential standards. That was not their preferred way that they wanted to clean it. They wanted to clean it with the people in place, but you see, we had to evacuate the people. So anytime I have to err, I will err on the greater side of safety for, for each and every resident in the city of East Chicago. Anything else?
So now, now, Mayor, I think we can get to our prizes.
Oh, okay.
And our prize.
Again, let, let me say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. We just want you to see the things that we got coming for you in the city of East Chicago. There was a time when state federal dollars, we couldn't even leverage because we did not have money to leverage. When I first became mayor, we had, we got $18 million annually from, from, from the vote and then 13 million of that was used to shore up the general fund. Now we use zero of those dollars to shore up this general fund and this is why we got money to leverage across these projects. But I just tell you, be patient because we're going to do this as fast as we can do it well. But again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for each and every one of you coming. And now we got, uh, along with Ameristar and the city of East Chicago, Ameristar reached out to us and they said that they want to give gifts and prizes when we do the townhouse thing. So, and, and, and in combination with working with them, that's where these prizes come from.
Mayor, if I may, I was in part raised by Ms. Williams and I will be obedient to give the last question if that's all right.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank the mayor and all of you all for having this and let us know what's going on in the city. And I'm very happy and very proud of the city. But one thing I'm not proud of, on Cardinal Drive where I live, every time there's a big rain, I get water in my basement and I've said, I don't know how much money trying to get it fixed, it's never fixed. So I want to know who should I talk to or if anyone could help me with that, I would appreciate it.
Through the sewer pipe, then we have a check valve program where the city pays 50% to put a check valve in your sewer line that allows the water not to flow backwards and come up through your basement. Uh, that's a program we've had for five years now. Many residents have taken advantage of it. On average, uh, the cost is around $1,500. The city would pay 750 to your 750. And, and we had people literally that was afraid to leave their homes when it would rain and, and, and I've had people write me letters to say we've released them from that misery because of the check valve that we put into the homes.
Okay. And more information, Dr. Doc, you could raise your hand.
You ready? Okay, you ready, Senator? And, and also I want you guys to know that Klein Avenue, if it reaches back, they used to have 35,000 cars going across, uh, that stretch. Now with the toll that they're going to implement, but every car that goes across the city of East Chicago will get 10 cent and, and dimes add up bleeding.
So we'll bring your prize to you to make this go as quickly as we can. And we want to thank the mayor and Ameristar for these prizes.
Mrs. Locklear, Lori Locklear.
You will get the first one. What you get? Oh, pizza cookie. Pizza cookie.
Evelyn Santiago. Janice M. Thompson. And Nella Jones. Mrs. Barbara Scott. Yeah, I'd just like to thank Ameristar for helping us with this. This simply says, I'm going to say Liz T. Oh, okay, Liz T. Mr. Richard Morriswell. Mrs. Maxine Cole.
Thank you.
Mr. Terry Valigan. Mrs. Maritza Lopez. Mrs. Terry Smith.
I needed one of these. I just bought a new cookie sheet. I had none of these.
Mrs. Juanita San, no, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Mrs. Juanita Santana.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stacy Winfield. Donna Harris. She's a kid, she's a kid, four. Mrs. Patty Gibson. Sandy Selena. Sandy Selena, okay. Joe Dragovich. Dragovich. Joe. 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 Dragovich? Oh, okay. Well, he must have the ear.
That's not me, I'm doing.
Renata. Well, yeah, but I don't know her first name. Black jazz, Renata. We got Mrs. Deborah Bollanos. Kate Rorodrigas. Willie G. Brothers. Okay, this will be the last one, folks. And again, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Mrs. Eva Williams. And thank you very much, ladies. Everybody be fortunate, especially in case somebody got to ask a question.